Let's bring the meeting to order, seventy zero four. First order of business would be to review the minutes from January nineteenth. And thank you Nick for getting the minutes together. And I think everybody has a copy of what George has provided as well.
Minor matter.
Does everybody have a chance to look through the minutes? So, so another thing I want to approach is we have the original minutes, then some taking a stab at some edits that George provided, should we look at that one?
My thoughts, I read through it and it was pretty good, I've got two little minor type things I suggest we put in, but other than that, I think it adds some stuff that we didn't have there, I think. Especially the last one there, that old business which we need to definitely put in, that we voted on it.
That's a good point. So then let's pursue the revised edition of the minutes as submitted by George, so as our working copy, because this is all work and we're going to get finalized. So what edits do we have for this revised version?
I just have two, like I said, very minor things, next to the last line on the first page, that we put our heads down and work, I suggest we work it, work it out together rather than we work out together. It's kind of like, sounds like we're at the gym. And the only other one was the last paragraph on the second page, add an S to finding a fact, find names of fact, about the fourth line from the bottom. And that's it for me.
Mr. Surgeon, anything from your end?
Go on with that, it was the red, the red changes, no fine.
Okay, George?
No.
Sergeant?
Also?
The only thing I found, you see, the first paragraph where it's between third line, updated shoreline zoning, I think that's a spelling.
Oh, ordinance, yeah.
Ordinance.
Well, somehow it's supposed to be ordinance, so in my brain, the first time I realized it, that's fine, then I looked at my, this doesn't. And then the other thing, kind of a question about the minutes. At some point when we had this discussion at our last meeting, it seemed like Mr. Lessard did not understand that, that applicability of the current ordinance was for all signs. Yeah, the applicability of the ordinance was for all signs, it's heat and hope that would be. And it was a kind of a light bulb moment for him to understand that what he was asking for would not be met by what we're doing with the, with the ordinance, which has applicability, ability to only being stated in the ordinance.
Right. There was a subset.
Yeah, it was a real shift in, in, in like thinking of what could be done to manage his or address his concerns. So, I don't know, I don't know, how do you all feel about that, but I felt it was.
Or you think something like that should be added to the minutes to capture that point?
I do, I do, only because he had been so adamant about changing it. It seemed like after he understood that, that this ordinance does not apply to all things, it's just where the ordinance applies. And what he was trying to do was accomplish sign things which would be addressed in his signed ordinance. Uh, yeah, so in signed ordinance. But if it's too difficult to make that subtle distinction, that's fine. I just recall that as being one of the things that we, I saw him go like, oh, you know, and understood that was the difference.
Well, I don't, I don't really think it's that germane, the whole discussion anyway, so what we have here is just fine, we can just move on.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Yeah, and to be honest with you, he reverted back later on, so I wasn't sure whether he understood and, or not, you know, I, I remember the aha moment where, you know, it seemed like he was understanding for the first time that the commercial development review ordinance only applied to certain types of development, new developments, not to, and not, it wasn't intended to have the signed standard or any of the other standards that block, apply to everything, you know, to all signs in town.
Well, as you said, I'm not sure when he left that he didn't forget what, the aha moment again, that it was back, I'm still thinking where it was. They never, I'm not sure totally it clicked in.
Okay, so I'm, I'm good, just.
Yeah, but that, yeah, no, that's good, I forgot about that.
So having discussed that, are there any other edits to the revised version so far, you know, other than what we mentioned? No, I indicate a motion from somebody?
A motion to accept the minutes of January nineteenth as amended.
Any, any more discussion? All those okay? Um, you're Travis George?
Yes.
Exactly.
That's going to be the case, I get working all the time. So, you want me to go ahead?
Well, I guess so, because you are here, it's okay with the board, since you're here, you would be second on new business, you know, so glad you're back to your birthday party.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm Travis George, I live here in Belgrade, a couple of years now. I know, you're probably all familiar with Airbnb, right?
What, what, on slot, what was that again?
Um, Airbnb, the short-term rental.
Uh, can you explain that?
Sure.
I'm not familiar with it.
Sure, it's like, it's a short-term rental service, it's on the website, there's a lot of them, there's just the most popular one, it basically rents out your house for the weekend, a day, an hour, whatever you want to do.
If I may compliment or supplement what you're saying, it's, it's a way of sharing property through web services and the planet for that matter. So in other words, you can go to a website and then you don't have to have, you don't have to hang a shingle, you go to a website and if you wanted to, for example, rent a, rent a space, Mr. George may have something to fit your needs, or someone in Washington state, or Hawaii you're aware of.
With that system, would Travis actually do the rental and dealing with the people, or is there some home base or office that will do that for him?
The money transfers hands digitally, but all the other stuff is done in person.
So where are you looking?
I'm on Lake Shore Drive, across from the public beach, right on the corner.
Do you know Michael Everly?
Yes, he's my neighbor.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you know him?
Pardon me?
Do you know him?
I don't know, but he, he also sent a letter too.
Yeah, he's, uh, that's a total separate thing, but our, our specific issue is there is a cut at home in the neighborhood that is having some problems with us. But the issue is also for all of Belgrade that I, that we have seen over the past two, three years, it's become more popular. One of the problems is that the majority of the people who are doing this all over the country, but especially here in Belgrade, are not people who live here in Belgrade. And they have a house in Portland, and they bought a few houses over here because of the leaks, and now they're renting them out every day of the summer. Which I personally don't care if someone who lives at their house is going away for a week and they want to rent their house, that makes some money, good for them. But the problem is we got twenty frat kids coming and parking all the way up down the street, throwing parties every single day of the summer. So, the other issue is that there's no limitation. If we, if I was to rent my house out for, as a property to somebody, I could not rent that house out to twenty-one people. You know, I'd still can only rent it out to the maximum that the septic system can handle and that it's zoned for. But they're renting that house out to twenty people for a week right on the lake, all, the septic system's not going to handle that. Um, there's been multiple issues with it leaking, and so having problems with their, with their septic systems, having problems with noise in the neighborhood, and we were told, you know, call the police. And so we called the police, I probably called them about fifty times last summer, from all the people that were over there. They come over and they said, there's no ordinance that says that they can't be here, so.
They didn't deal with, like, the noise and?
They said, can you guys, can you guys quiet down? That's, that's all they said they can say. People quiet down for thirty minutes, the person drives away, and they go back to having their keg party on, you know, out the back.
So this is going on down lakefront property or as well as?
And it's all, our, our issues right on lakefront property, but I, I have multiple people that, that I've been talking to all over Belgrade that it happens to. Um, it's just more prevalent with lakefront property, because people are coming here in the summer to be on the lake and do those things, but there are properties that are in central Belgrade that people are renting that are having the same problems. People coming over shooting guns, you know, they don't know any of the laws around here, they're renting people's houses. They say, oh, we're from New York, you know, we don't know, rent this house out, uh, it's not a big deal. But, I mean, I already know that the zoning for the, for these properties is residential and having a short-term lease already violates the zoning, so it's not a transient zone. Uh, but that's not being enforced, so I would like, kind of my point of coming here is to start the discussion, but having some specific talks about what can we do to mitigate this problem. And I don't want to infringe on people's rights to be able to do what they want with their property. Unfortunately, that, I wish I had that paperwork with me, but I'll look forward to it. But there are multiple towns in, in the state of Maine who have already, this problem, and have already started to address it. And some of the things that they've done are that you must, must be a primary residence if you're going to do this. Uh, you have to have a maximum of six people, or if you have a large house, no more than the maximum capacity of your septic system. Um, and if you have a registration for regular rentals, which I'm not sure if Belgrade registers their rental homes or not, but you also must register with the town if you're going to rent your house.
I don't believe we have a town. The other, one thing you mentioned about the zoning kind of thing, the only zoning Belgrade has is shoreline zoning. And, you know, one of the, uh, the least, our policy when we had the shoreline zoning era was that rentals, renting a summer house or whatever to somebody else was, was not considered commercial from the perspective of the shoreline zoning ordinance, so.
Right.
And I know this Airbnb may be increasing the problem because of how it's done and whatever, but, you know, people have been renting their house or camp on the water for.
Eons.
Eons or whatever, it's maybe becoming more of a problem, but it hasn't, but it's not a violation to rent.
But it's typically done.
Pardon me?
It's typically done for a month or an entire summer. So they don't, they don't rent it out to different people every day of the week.
Yeah, I was wondering, one of the questions I had was, do you know, are your problem, the problem areas, is it like rentals or it's just for a short period of time, a weekend or something? Or, because typically, you know, people will rent for the week or the month or, you know.
They're not a problem.
Decent people that, whatever.
So there have been people who came and rented the house for a week, you know, and they were all perfectly fine, didn't even know they were there, enjoying the lake just like everybody else. But the majority of the time it was one, two-day things. And what's happening is these guys are getting together in Massachusetts or New Hampshire and saying, hey, this, this guy's running a septic six hundred dollars a day. Listen, twenty of us get together, pay twenty-five dollars each, and we'll rent this place out. So you got cars like literally all the way down the street parked on the side.
Is the situation, so the situation isn't that somebody's, who's, this is not their primary residence, they bought this as a investment or whatever. This isn't a second home for them, this is just a business that they're running basically, is what you're saying? So are they, are, but they're not renting it all the time, it would seem to me they could make more money renting it, you know, on a weekly basis for the entire summer. The reason I ask that is because we do have an ordinance that speaks to when you convert a residence to a commercial use. It, it isn't zoning, it, it's a different kind of ordinance, but, so I'm just trying to figure out if it breaks that threshold, but.
Yeah, it's rented out the entire year as, whenever somebody has it, obviously in the winter time it's a little slower. But this winter, you know, we had four or five people come for the weekends, rented it out. But during the summer, it was booked completely every single day for different parties.
Different parties every day?
Yeah, yeah, or they, or, or they'd be there for like a weekend, and then Monday there'd be someone there until Friday, and then there'd be someone else there Saturday.
Sunday, different Saturday.
Yeah, or, or they would be here, you know, two days during the week, you know, just someone who, like local neighbors or whatever, someone coming up from Portland, they'd come for a few days. But it wasn't like, you know, I rent your house out for the summer for three months, you know.
Have you had any discussion with anyone else in town, or is this the first time you had a discussion with any officials here in this town about this?
I, I talked to Gary a few times.
How long ago was that?
Uh, she knew, she knew about it when we were having problems, you know, at the beginning I started talking to her about it, and then she said.
When was that?
In the beginning of the summer. This has been an ongoing issue, because that house is also involved in a lawsuit with the entire neighborhood because that.
Oh, no.
Is this what's-his-name's place?
It's Gary Fowler's. Yeah, so I, I've only lived there for two years, this has been an ongoing problem before that. He lived there before, and then he, he moved out and now he lives there in his home in Gardner, and he has multiple homes. If you go on Airbnb, you can see his profile, he has four or five houses that he's doing this with. But obviously he's not a person that, if he wants to work with you, you know, because I've talked to him about it, I said, I'm right across the street from you. I don't want you to, you know, I want, it's your house from, whatever else is going on, it's still your house, you have the right to rent it, but come on, deal, can we get, get on the same page here and not have frat parties, you know? Every single, from Thursday till Monday, there was either a frat party, a bachelorette party, a bachelor party, uh, some crazy birthday party. I mean, like, I could, I could roll a lot, I'm not the only person, and it's not the only, only residence, this is just my specific issue.
Okay, so it just, is it going on in some other properties in town?
Oh, yeah.
Like where?
Yeah, I mean, the, the house down the road.
What road?
On Lake Shore Drive again was rented for a little while, but we actually asked them, hey, we're having this problem down here, would you mind not doing that? And rent it out as a regular rental, and they said, yes, we'll go ahead and we'll just rent it out as a regular rental, so we can see the problem that you're having.
So that's a second one.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get a feel for the frequency.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised that the county sheriff didn't deal with the no, the noise and the parking more, because I had a similar situation down the street. Well, I didn't, it didn't really bother us too much, but our other neighbor complained when there used to be a lot of parties at a house that's in between us and, and the sheriff's department was all over it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they.
And got, you know, stopped it.
Yeah, at first, you know, the people, even on the telephone, when I called them, said, hey, other than if I was going to tell them to quiet down, there's nothing really that we can do about it. Uh, but then I talked to Gary.
Fuller?
The other day, he's the representative.
Oh, he still is, Gary.
Hiller, yeah, I talked to Gary Hiller, uh, just in passing, and he said, oh, I know someone down here, and I'll talk to him. Then after I talked to him, they, they did come out now, before they weren't even coming out. And then they finally came out, and they would quiet them down, you know, but as soon as they knew that they were gone, they, they don't care, because they're, they're going to be gone tomorrow.
Yeah.
You know, and then, and I know, I can't remember his name, Fuller, Fowler, he doesn't care either, because he's, he sends his guys over a, after it's done, and to clean it up. But they leave beer bottles all over the place, they leave it all over the shoreline over there, multiple times I've had to pick up fireworks, I think they were lighting off. At two o'clock in the morning, they just left them out there. And then we have our boat over there, and a couple of times we had fireworks and stuff that were inside the boats, you know, because we have them all moored out over there in the little peninsula. Uh, but they, they don't care that, they, they're just going to be gone the next day.
Have you talked to the town code enforcement officer, he's not here tonight, but Gary Fuller?
No, I haven't, no, I sent, I did send an email earlier about some other issue, not, not changing this, about the septic system. Um, because after they had two parties right in a row, but there was eighteen plus people there, and there was a bad smell coming from where I know the septic system is and the leak field is.
Right.
And he said he was going to check it out, I don't know if he, if he did or not, or what the problem was.
Yeah.
To your knowledge, the, the problems that you've either heard of or are familiar with, are they always occurring, or thinking rentals? People don't typically rent their house inland or whatever for something like that, are they pretty much in the shoreline zone within two hundred and fifty feet of the lake, these houses that are?
For the most part, from the ones that I've talked to, you know, a lot of people have just stopped doing it because the, the house needs to straighten, you know, and they're living there. You know, there's not, there's a few people that I know are actually doing this as a business, so the damage is like, they're right off, you know, they just go and fix it, you know? But yeah, I would say the majority of them are.
The reason I ask that is it's, it's possible as we review our shoreline zoning ordinance that we could modify the sections that deal with, you know, right now, it's just, I think it's more or less a policy that rental of summer homes is, is not considered commercial from the perspective of commercial. But, you know, we, we could, and I'm not saying we can solve every situation, but you could have, we don't have a standard or something in there, although, you know, I guess it'd be a violation of the company, but if not in there says that you can't rent your house, or that you can, well, I'm getting into these double negatives about, you know, more people staying than the septic system's designed for.
Yeah, if there's even a cap on that, I think that would solve a lot of the problems.
Well, the other, the other aspect of this is the parking, you can regulate the number of people by regulating the parking. Now, I know the town select board in the past has decided they didn't want to get into the business of regulating parking. That would be their, because it's public safety, that's their domain, but, but that would be one route. Because twenty-one people need to have a lot of vehicles and, and likewise, if, if somebody was doing this on a full-time basis commercially and, you know, I'm not positive of this, but it might trigger the commercial development review ordinance with, if it was a house bigger than twelve hundred square feet. And which case then, they'd have to get approval from the town, that's something the code enforcement officer could deal with. To get approval from the town, they would have to provide off-street parking.
Yeah.
And plus, we would have to evaluate their septic system to make sure it was adequate, as well as other things.
I know he's not willing to do that, because I'm pretty sure that septic system's bad, because people, he, he drove trucks over that. And then all during the summer, when we complained to the people who were parking there, about parking on the street, and they would park on the beach, parking for the public, for the people.
Oh, that's why I never can find a parking space there.
So we would say, hey, you can't park over here, this is for the beach people, they're coming to deal with the park. Now they said, okay, that's fine, and they would drive all their cars onto the grass, and they would park all their cars on the front lawn, which, you know, it looks trashy. And I don't really want that, when people come over and enter my house and say, why have they got twenty cars parked down there in the front of their yard, you know? And when, I bought, I'm not saying I'm going to move or anything, but I bought that house with the expectation that my neighbors would have used that house for residential purpose. And I didn't buy that house expecting someone to put up a motel section across the room, you know? So it definitely decreases the value of the neighborhood and of the homes around it, and he really doesn't care. You know, we've asked him, he's, oh, come to here, and the next day he's, he's back over there, he's even come up to us and said, there's never going to be a party over there again or anything.
All right, so, well, you've got two, two, two properties within this area are getting involved, this rental type thing, any other properties?
Uh, I can find out, there's a group of people that I've been talking with, and that I have email chains with to see, a lot of them are out traveling right now, so I couldn't really get them, but.
Probably, not that it's Mr. George's responsibility to find all Airbnbs, Airbnb in Belgrade, but Serge on, in the town can give us a feel too.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a, there was, at least during the summer, there was quite a few, um, on Roble upon, on the north side of Great One. But, uh, right now, the last time I looked, it was only really two or three. I think the people are.
Time here, I guess.
I mean, one thing, you know, we have to keep, on the flip side of this, is keep in mind, one, as Rich said earlier, it's a long-standing tradition that summer homes are, are rented for various periods of time by people, and have been for, you know, since World War One, or whatever. And, and, and that this is a big part of the business that the realtors do.
Absolutely.
But that's a little different situation than what you're describing, those are.
I have a bunch of those, but I'm, I'm, there's only two people in that entire neighborhood who really live there all year long. Me and the guy, another come here across the street. Everyone else is just there during the summer, or they rent it out for the winter, or rent it out for the summer, and none of them are a problem. They rent them out, people stay there, they're happy, no issues, they treat the property and the neighborhood like they're, that they belong there. It's only the house that, houses that rent them out for the weekend, you know, it's others that just come in and just ruin the place. It's really, it's really a sad thing too, because that property in the back over there, where it's a common area for all twenty houses over there, where it becomes a huge problem.
Well, plus anybody that lives further down the road.
Yeah.
Would have a public safety vehicle needed to get in there.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely a huge problem, because the, when the.
I mean, that road's narrow enough as it is, it's problematic in its own right.
Fifteen cars, that was like normal during the summer to come down there, there'd be fifteen cars all lined up down the road. I mean, there's only so much you can do though, once, you know, once they're there, you know? And the other problem is too, they don't understand that, that, that area over there is not, that house is, you know, that house is legally built, but even saying that they have a little backyard in there, that whole peninsula area is not theirs. And when we go down there to use it, they get all fired up. You know, multiple times I had confrontations with people who were like, what are you doing? I rented this place, this is all ours. I go, back up buddy, you know, I live here, you know, this is a common space. He didn't tell me that, that's your problem, you know, deal with it with him, you know, but, you know, I'm a young male, I can handle myself, but there are people down there who go down there and they're frightened sometimes to go down there, because we got these people who don't understand. You know, there's twenty, twenty-five-year-old guys drunk down there acting up, you know, it really, it's a sad thing sometimes for.
Yeah.
So Travis, you mentioned that you're aware of some other towns that have had similar problems.
Yes.
You know, that'd be helpful if you could get some of that information.
I'll send it to you, I had a document, but I don't care about the rest of it.
I think I have.
Do you? Yeah, I can.
The.
The one, the one that I sent you guys is specifically for Portland.
Yeah, I was going to say Portland's been in the press dealing with this.
I wonder if we could possibly do within the shoreline regs or something, kind of, and I know that's not, all these things I'm telling, ideas I have won't solve everything, but you get the issue of limiting parking, limiting the amount of people based on septic system.
Yeah, I'm not expecting every problem to be solved, I understand, you know, some, some things are just going to happen, you have people come over and they're going to be annoying, you know, you should deal with it. But if we can have some way, at least to get it a little bit better, and I like when I go talk to him and say, hey, you're violating this code, you know, he can't just say, he goes stuff it.
Well, then also we would have the ability to do something about it. Right now, it's not in our codes or whatever, but, you know, we could limit it to. Right now, it's not in our codes or whatever, but yeah, we could limit it to, uh, and might, again, it's not gonna solve them all, but the. Uh, you could have a provision that if you're gonna rent your summer home on the lake or whatever, it's gotta be for a period no less than a week or something, which would.
That would solve a lot of problems.
The, the, um, I mean, there, there's two aspects to this, what, what do we have for yours? First off, just for your benefit, we don't enforce the town ordinances, uh, Gary Fuller, the code enforcement officer, that's why I ask. And it's, um, normally he's here and, uh, during our meetings, unfortunately, he's not tonight, we don't really know why, but. Um, uh, that would have been helpful, it would have avoided one stop, because I, I would highly recommend that you. Set up a meeting with him, he's usually got office hours on Thursdays, um, but he's been sick, so I, maybe that's it.
Yeah, he gets, he got, he left early, he got a bad back, he fell down.
Oh.
As well as being, you know, sick with the flu.
Okay, yeah, so he's ill, but, um, because he's the only one, none of us have any authority to enforce any of these ordinances, only he does, and, and. As I said, there's this one ordinance, the commercial development review ordinance, if, like you, if. Somebody's doing this full-time as a business, basically, they don't live there, um, and it, so it's not a home occupation, you know, that you're doing it. A little bit on the side, uh, that's only something that Gary could, uh, uh, enforce.
Yeah, I just wanna make that clear, I don't wanna infringe on people's rights to be able to make a little money on the side.
Yeah, no, and 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 the, and the fact that they follow this ordinance wouldn't necessarily, except that they have to meet certain standards, including noise, including parking, including. Other things, uh.
Just right now, he has no responsibility to.
And, uh, so, including the septic system, which, you know, it's gotta be of concern to everybody, I mean, that's a public health hazard i- in addition to the threat to the lake. Um, the, um, um, the, and and Gary's the plumbing inspector as well, so, you know, he's kinda got it all together there. The other thing is what Rich was describing, um, I mean, we, Belgrade doesn't have townwide zoning, uh, and, uh, and who knows if we ever will, but. But, uh, we do have, uh, shoreline zoning, cause it's state mandated. And since probably a lot of this, I mean, for example, the house you're describing must be within two hundred and fifty feet of the, of the li- lakeshore, and I'm guessing the most lucrative properties. Many of them are, are gonna be, or, or, um, and, um.
It's the same property that we told, whatever his first name is, was, uh.
Yeah, no, I remember he came in here.
Clyde, he wanted to get permission to split the lot somehow.
Yeah, right, he wanted to subdivide it.
More non-conforming, it's the same property.
Yeah, right, um, and, uh, like Rich said, that, uh, we're actually, I mean, this depends on the select board, because we hit. Gets a little bit more involved, we're trying to figure out what we're gonna be working on next for ordinances. Our plan is to work on shoreline zoning, they may want us to work on something different, assign ordinance, but, um, the, um. Yeah, um, but, you know, it's something that, um, maybe we could address when, if we're allowed to work on the shoreline zoning ordinance, um.
I definitely appreciate you guys taking the time and considering it, because sure, it's the definitely been a problem, but, uh, so far, I know of Portland, Camden, Rockland. Um, another small town, I can't remember the name near Rockland, so they're pretty much.
Oh, maybe Rockport.
Rockport, um, and there was one other that have already adopted.
Yeah, no, probably communities that have a lot of, I wonder if any of the communities in along, around Sebago Lake have dealt with this, you know, like Naples or something.
Yeah, I would wonder.
The, um, um, I do know, you know, in terms of, Pete, you were asking about elsewhere in town or inland, you know, away from the lakes, I, I, I only know. And this is an acquaintance where they, uh, had to, what'd they do? I think for work purposes, they had to move to California for six months, so they rented their house, and that's how they did it, but that's not really what we're talking about here.
See, those people still live there, you know, they, they, they're gonna come back, you know, and they're gonna live there.
This, this is an issue in college towns too, I, my, my son, uh, when he was in law school down at University of Virginia in Charlottesville. Um, the housing's so short, particularly during graduation, that a lot of people rent rooms, not to mention, uh, parts of their homes, other, uh, or their garages or something. Uh, and, uh, and I guess it, you know, can be kinda problematic, not with, not the partying part, but the, uh, the parking part and that kinda thing.
I mean, my expectations too would be different if I was living, you know, I'm, I'm, I lived in Lubbock, Texas for a long time, I, Texas Tech University pretty much owns an entire town. So my expectation while I was there was people are gonna be partying.
Yeah, right.
And but in Belgrade, you know, my expectation is for the most part, it's gonna be pretty low-key here, you know, it's be quiet, you know? Especially, you know, when you move off to the side of a dead-end road, you know, I'm thinking, okay, well, there's a beach there, there's gonna be people, but those people are awesome, you know, they're quiet, they don't, they don't cause any problems. But it, it's really the same problem.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, uh, I, I, you guys have come up with a lot of stuff here, so I'm sure you guys have had minutes and we'll discuss all that, but. I'd love to, if you guys keep me involved too with what you guys are doing, and I will keep, Mike Everly is kind of the person who's heading up. Another side of our legal problems with him, so I'm trying to keep him a person while he's away.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that. Um, that, that, that is the other aspect of this, I mean, it, it, it could be addressed through a civil lawsuit.
Yeah, uh, we're hoping that he solves.
As a nuisance.
Soon, um, he's already been open to settlement, because he now knows that, the things that he tried to do are not.
Yeah.
He, he, yeah, he tried to put it back on you guys for, for a long time, you know, he said, oh, yeah, this is completely legal. But there's paper roads that go right through the middle of his property, that were grandfather roads that he built on, you know? That's a whole separate issue.
Yeah, right, no, it's a separate issue, I, I would encourage you though, uh, uh, get together with Gary Fuller, the code enforcement officer, cause there, um. Uh, he, he may wanna wish, he might wish, since he's not here today, we could maybe save the step, but he may wish to discuss this with us again.
Yeah, I think I have his email address, I'll email and tell him and ask him, so it's basically.
Yeah, it's actually in Augusta, cause he, he's full-time code enforcement officer in Augusta, but, uh, uh, does he have office hours every Thursday evening?
Here?
Yeah.
I think he has, yeah. Five to seven, five to seven.
Yeah.
I'll just maybe talk to one of you guys first and then.
Yep, that's fine.
So that you can, I have some insight of what's going on, I know he knows the property, cause I've talked to him and about other problems too.
Oh, yes, he knows the property.
I mean, I don't know what the rest of you think, whether you think I'm way off base with, uh, it potentially, if it was done, you know, as a commercial business, most of the time, if not all the time. Uh, whether, and it was over twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Whether it would trigger the commercial development review.
I think it very well could if it was done, like you say, all the time, person never lived there, never intends to live there, he bought it to, to continue to rent like that, but.
Yeah.
You know, the person who comes up for three weeks during the summer, but has the rest of the summer, he's back home and he rents it out to people.
Yeah, no, I don't think that would. Well, I, there's that, plus, I mean, we would be open one big can of worms, uh, and plus, that's not the pro, those aren't the people that causing the problems. It's, it's, I mean, if this is basically, uh, you know, a, a frat house on, on Long Pond.
Yeah, I don't know a single person who rents their house out for the summer, or even to multiple people, would you let the last time leave? Yeah, that seems like a, that would be not a good idea, you know?
I know, if you live for a month.
Yeah, a month, even a month, it'd be fine.
They have big crowds, but they're quiet.
Well, and there are plenty of cottages that, I, I know people from Augusta and that I worked with and stuff that, you know, used every year, rent a cottage for a week out here, you know, and, and. Then somebody else would rent it for a week, but, you know, I don't think that's the problem that we're trying to address. Yeah, no, I mean. Yeah.
Personally, on, on, I look at what you, the, the thing about the rental for a weekend with bachelor party, it's kinda like, jeez. If I owned the place, I'd never let that, that happen with.
Oh, they damaged it.
How much damage are you gonna end up in?
I can tell you one time that it was so bad that you could smell vomit, everything outside of the house. His wife came over to, to look at it, she walked in for five minutes, walked back out, I said, is it nice in there? And she said, uh, no, I'm gonna have to get a cleaning for that.
Well, how do you make money at that?
Well, you know, it's the old story, how much do they charge, do you know? I'm just kinda curious.
It said six hundred bucks per.
Six hundred a night.
What, for each person?
Uh, no.
Just a flat rate.
Yeah, so that's, you know, yeah, you know, you cram it full of people, like you said, pay twenty bucks a night.
Yeah.
You know, that and.
Yeah, the, the biggest one they had was twenty-eight people for four days, Friday, it was Friday through Monday. And it was so full that people were sleeping outside in hammocks, tents and stuff, and it rotated.
We, I think we, uh, speaking for myself, but I think we probably appreciate your concern for things like that, you know?
I wouldn't wanna live next door.
Not at all, it was two really good neighbors too, I think, uh, you know, they paid, sold their houses and left, just to kind of take it, it's been like an eight-year battle with, with him. He finally left and it was empty for two years, and I was there for the last year, I was like, this is awesome, I don't know what other people complain about. And then he decided he was gonna start this business and started going right downhill again, so. Yeah, I appreciate you guys looking at this way for me, and, uh, I'll switch face with Gary, and I'll have him switch face with you and then.
Terms of the town, being able to do anything in the shorter term, it really falls on his shoulders.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's a whole lot, I'm sorry.
No, no, it would.
We don't have a whole lot right now.
Yeah, yeah, we don't.
And not, not just for this specific issue, I mean, I plan on being here for a while, so, bigger picture. How do we protect the value of the homes and the area from, you know, worst-case scenario, someone comes and buys. All the houses on one, one spot of the lake and just decides they're gonna rent them out every day of the week, you know, that just becomes more popular.
Right, right, yeah.
So just so you're clear, um, you know, at this point, our actions are, are few that we could do to resolve your problem.
Yes.
Um, although in the long term, it might be wise for us to tighten up some language and some, and some one or more ordinances to address situations like this.
Yes, that's all I can ask for, you know, that's kind of my goals, you know, to get it into minds and, as you're working on those things. I'm pretty sure this is gonna get settled, dispersed eventually, maybe hopefully by the summer, but still, it doesn't mean.
Couldn't happen again.
Yeah, I don't know, well, it could doesn't happen to somebody else.
Right.
You know, and I feel bad for them.
Right, or, you know, three houses down the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit disconcerting that law enforcement did not, uh. Respond with force in kind, I guess you'd say that way, you know?
Well, you know, I, I know from this one experience, just down, sort of a house caddy across, diagonally across the street, um. It, it was really, the guy lives there, you know, and, and, and so, I think it was more that once he was sensitized that it was bothering the neighbors. You know, it wasn't so much that they brought the, the heavy hand, anvil down on his head kinda thing, you know, they just said, we've had complaints and, and he took it to heart. Cause he's not a bad guy, but, but he, and, but he also lives there, you know?
Gary does it, he, he's already told us, oh, I got, I got your, the police, uh, sent me a letter, I threw it in the trash. And goes, yeah, make sure I rent it out to someone worse next time.
Because I know from the parking issue that there's nothing to them to enforce, because the town doesn't have a town, uh, ordinance.
Right, they, they told us if they're laying off fireworks, then they could actually do something about it. And they could, they could even arrest the person that they were doing it, but as far as noise, it's really hard to with fireworks, cause. They would lay fireworks, and there's twenty of them, no, we weren't, what are you talking about?
Now, why, why would they not be, uh, at a certain time of day or something?
No, there's a, there is a specific ordinance against fireworks usage.
Ten o'clock at night?
Yeah.
And except for Fourth of July and I think Christmas.
Is that Belgrade or is that State?
State.
Other than that, they said, you know, noise, I mean, a couple of times he, he, one person, he talks pretty strongly, but that was more because the person was being belligerent. You know, but, uh, if the person just says, okay, that's, that's, that's really all that he said that he didn't. And the parking thing, he, he did say a few, about the parking, um, he was like, yeah, this is definitely an issue. But he's, I don't know really what I can do about it right now, other than, uh, put in a report.
Yeah.
You know, you're like, I can't call someone to come and tell all these people, cause I don't know, you know, he's especially these people at the, at the beach. He's like, yeah, it's not supposed to be any overnight parking over here, I'm pretty sure, but I don't know, you know, he doesn't really.
And, you know, there's a sign there that says that, but whether there's an ordinance to back it up, or somebody just, you know, the town just stuck up a sign, hoping people would comply with it. To, or, would be a good question, you know, again, the town doesn't have a parking ordinance.
Yeah, someone put a no parking sign on, uh, my side of the road over there, and I was like, oh, that's awesome. And a lot of people just listened to it, but a few people were like, they can't do that. And they just parked there, and I was like, well, just don't park in front of my bridge, please, so I can walk across to the beach, but. That was really it, I didn't really know it enough to argue with them, I was like, hey, if I see a no parking sign, I'm not parking that. I'm pretty sure there's no, no idiot sign that we could put in front of that.
Doesn't mean they would comply.
Yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate it, guys, and I'll, uh, keep you all in touch if I hear anything from Gary.
And make a motion that George sings happy birthday to Travis.
No, oh, no. No, you don't wanna do that, that would curdle the cake.
That's a difficult situation.
Yeah, yeah, it is, I, I think there is something we could probably, when we work on shoreline zoning. Like I said, if it happens elsewhere in town, I'm not gonna pull about it, but, you know, we could put a few things in there to address, you know, short-term rentals or.
If it happens down, um, down beyond me, down off Horse Point Road, I get a, a full house down there for a month and. And I'm sure that it's, it's affecting the sewer system down there, and, uh, so.
Yeah, we might have really helped sometimes, how often that happens.
Sewer system.
It's overloaded, but it's.
But it's not, it's not that situation just for the weekend, you know, this is for the whole month, they'll have, you know, twenty, thirty people down there.
I think just before you come on though, we had another problem down there, in the sand pit, you know, it was called a cannibal.
Oh.
And this was, was going on, you know, Peter wasn't on when we did that, Peter was on board that.
Yes, yeah.
Mass gathering ordinance, yeah.
You were here for that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that went down in the, in the village, right, right.
Just to kick, kick that, that one, it's, it's, this is just, uh, basically a continuance of it.
Right. And really, the town has got to come to grips with that, at some point, we're gonna have to have some enforcement authority that's available. But until that time, we will be hamstrung.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to, so.
Till we hire a football team to command a baseball bats.
Yeah, so, anyway, well.
Locked on the big stretch.
Yeah. Alrighty, um, thanks for that, um, I think the next thing to go. To discuss time management, number one on the agenda, which is to discuss time management, and eighth is transparency, that's our next thing. Um, so part of that has to do with the fact that, you know, time management. And anybody can jump in here if you want, um, it has to do with our overall priorities that we have for us. As well as being, the second priority is, uh, being transparent with anything that we do, I suppose, so, um. As was indicated in this last, um, um, discussion with Travis, that George brought up, is that. Our work plan really is to look at, at shoreline zoning ordinance next, unless we're directed to do something different. I hope to go to the, the select persons, um, that did not happen, um, they ended up. How do they do this? Did they reschedule?
That last contest?
Yeah.
They postponed it till the twenty-fifth.
That was the public hearing, you know, they got a regular, don't they have a regular?
They're regular, their select board is this Tuesday coming up.
So, so will we, we be on that one?
Yes, you're on that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, good.
Okay, so we can go to that, so any of us who might wanna come to that would be helpful.
That's at six thirty right now.
Yeah, six thirty Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
So, then, you know, I would plan on attending that and talking to the select persons about this idea. That our priorities have, have been established so far, so unless we're directed to do something entirely different. Then my expectation is to continue working on shoreline zoning next, to update the, that ordinance. Again, to come in compliance with, or better align with conference of plan ideas. Also to straighten out language, add clarification, reduce kind of any conflicting language where possible and so on. So, um, that would be what I'm thinking of.
Right, plus we have the, the new state guidelines to look at and see if there's anything there that we wish to incorporate.
Good point, and, um, luckily, we have, um, some expertise in housing that helps us, so.
To the extent I remember everything, you know.
So, thank you, yes.
Yeah, we, we should be able to do that ourselves.
I'd like to think so. That'd be good.
Even if we didn't have new state guidelines or things to look at, there's, there's enough in our non-conformant section that's problematic, I think that we need to do, should be doing that anyway.
Yeah, right, right.
So.
And there are a number of recommendations in the comprehensive plan that are, that deal with the shoreline zone.
So I'm thinking with some focus on shoreline zone, you know, I'm not trying to predict what or project a timeline that we haven't even yet discussed, but I'd like to think that if we have this year to do that, work on those things, perhaps looking ahead to divide the months so that perhaps, if we do have, now taking applications that come in for permits, we can handle those sometimes, and at other times, or other meetings, we, we handle, uh, zone revision type work. But I guess I would like to make sure that we have some approach that would make some sense both for the town, um, the taxpayers, being fair to the ordinance, and also figure out the comprehensive plan. Try to keep all those things in line with our volunteer organization, so. So if that sounds, you know, acceptable to all of you folks, I would, you know, I'd like to keep that idea alive and go forward with that.
Yeah, no, I, I think, uh, I think that's the only way we can handle it, otherwise, you know, uh, I, I really don't know what the select board's expectations are, you know, I don't think they really, judging by what was on the tape, they obviously didn't discuss it. They probably didn't think about it, so.
I'm sure that they just heard Dennis and whoever his name is, Paul.
Sore.
Get too many piers, right? No, they heard from them, and all of a sudden, you know, they listen and it's like, oh, that is, I guess we ought to deal with that. And I don't think they have any idea.
Yeah.
They just need to hear that and I hope that, uh, they would see that, you know, our priority is the shoreline zoning. And it's not to say that we couldn't use a sign ordinance, but I hope they, you know, just, you know, until Paul looked at our sign standards, it wasn't even an issue about sign zoning, sign ordinance, and all of a sudden it becomes the, oh, yeah, we gotta get on that, or we gotta do that, and it's like, I don't know.
Well, and the only feedback we got about signs was in pushing up, wanting to push us in the other direction, you know, providing the electronic changeable signs altogether, you know, so.
Yeah, and then we could consider the selectmen, we could bring it up when we talk to the selectmen, that maybe we could do the sign, uh, ordinance along with the shoreline zoning. And if we did something like that, we could ask for extra, ask for extra help. You know, Dennis, Dennis and, uh, and Paul, there's no reason why, you know, the, the selectmen could assign some type of, you know, task to them. The selectmen can do that.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's what they volunteered to do, my concern though is, that's still gonna take a lot of our time. Just look at how long, you know, how much time we could, gets consumed just in discussions with him, I mean, he's not the easiest guy to work with, to be frank. I mean, he doesn't listen, he doesn't listen, you know, he doesn't like the, he doesn't like the compromise. And so, you know, I, I, I can see what we've seen so far being the case, and, you know, we'll just go woo-oo around in circles and waste a lot of our time.
I also have, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I, I look at Paul in terms of, if you just let him run with something, it's kinda like letting the fox watch the chicken coop, you know, he was in the business of selling signs. He says he retired, I don't.
Sounds to me like he's still in business style.
I was gonna say, I, I think there's a, there's a personal, uh, con, uh, to me, there's some conflict there, isn't there?
Yeah, I, I mean, I wouldn't wanna be in his shoes, once the public gets involved reviewing that sign ordinance, because people will be all over that. Cause he's well known in town as a sign salesman.
Right. And, you know, I, I guess I'm still of the opinion that I'd be happy to share this with you and I'd be happy to share this with the select person, but, I'm just not aware of the fact that we had a problem at this time. And I'm, I'm still not convinced that, that would warrant an entire sign ordinance. You know, if someone else wants to do the work on it, that's fine. And I'd be happy to, at the right time, examine the contents of that ordinance and see how that applies to what we've done so far. And also see how it lines up with the comprehensive plan and recommendations that have been studied and brought forward over time. But, um, if pressed, you know, about whether or not business is hanging on a sign ordinance, on the development of a sign ordinance, um, my firm conviction is the infrastructure is what's holding it up, not a sign ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
So with the lack of infrastructure, without public water, without public sewer, I don't see, you know, you know, businesses streaming in here, you know, you know, and then turning around at the door and saying, oh, we can't do it because of, without a sign ordinance.
We would have heard about it if that was the case by then, long before now. Dollar General would have asked for a waiver.
Yeah.
If it was important to them, it's not important to them.
Although that's kind of discussion, you know, needs to be made to the selectmen.
Exactly, and that's why it's crazy that way.
See where they, see where they're coming from.
And I'm not convinced a, a thirty-two square foot sign saying Hanaford out in front of the old envelope factory or, you know, the Stewarts, wouldn't be big enough to draw people who know there's a Hanaford there.
Yeah, right. One, one thing I will mention, um, uh, I went to that old Farts and Liars D P retiree's luncheon and, and Dennis Ketchel was there. And he cornered me and, and he said, well, what do you think about that ordinance and, you know, the sign ordinance? And I, I was trying to be diplomatic and I said, well, it's a good first step, but it, uh, uh, it really needs a lot more work. And then he said, what do you mean, what do you mean, you know, and, and, and I said, well, first off, it isn't even drafted like an ordinance. And secondly, it isn't even user friendly, it's incredibly long and complex and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, I, I, I mean, I didn't say this, but, you know, you wanna be business unfriendly, that's the, there's the ordinance for you right there, you know.
Bages of definitions, so.
Yeah, uh, but, um, but anyway, you know, I told him, I said, you know, we, we need to talk to the selectman first about what our priority, what they see, whether they agree with our priorities and what our work plan is, you know, that our, our priority is shoreline zoning ordinance, and Dennis actually said he agrees with that. But he was convinced, he was convinced that the select board would say the sign ordinance is the top priority, which is, um, but, you know, I, with all due respect, I, I disagree, I, I don't think we can work on two ordinances at the same time, I don't think we have the time, the capacity of the time.
When I, when I say we, I'm saying, I'm talking, have a, a separate group doing it, they, they do most, they do ninety-nine percent of the work.
Oh, I agree, they should do the heavy lifting, they're the ones that volunteered for this.
Yeah, so.
But, but, you know, like you've already seen, they consume, and he consumes incredible amount of our time. He just will not shut up.
I haven't seen that.
One thing, I, I, I would be, you know, he, George had indicated, uh, well, you know, we could work, Peter said we could work them both together and, and George said, we could have let them do the heavy work. I'm somewhat, uh, very uneasy with kind of passing it off to somebody to do most of the work. And then it comes back to us and we haven't had a whole lot of input to begin with, it's like you're in this defensive position of trying to, things you don't like shooting it down instead of being part of the.
Well, the only, the only way would work is if they view their role as being basically a consultant to us. And we told them what to do and they did it. And, you know, you've seen it in the times with Mr. Lassard's been here, he's, that's not his mindset, it's his way or the highway, basically.
One of the things in particular, right, you know, he's got that alternative thing on, on the ordinance, an option thing, and the changeable signs. Personally, I don't know, my personal opinion is I would not favor anything that, that allows signs to change more often than state law permits, I don't think as a town, we wanna get involved in, and Gary isn't gonna wanna run out and force that half often as a sign changer.
Well, and that's an important point to make with the select board, I mean, this is gonna be additional work for Gary because the permitting falls on his shoulders and then, you know, this is gonna, could result in him getting complaints and, and signs are the kinda thing, is people get kinda upset about, um, but, uh, and whether he has the time for that, you know, he works fourteen, fifteen hours a week, I mean, he's the plumbing inspector to the boot, you know, at some point, uh, it gets too much.
If I could interject this, maybe, um, whatever the sign ordinance draft language, um, comes in, have it, uh, that the select persons, you know, are responsible, not for enforcing it, but handling all of it.
Permitting?
The, the air charge of permitting for that.
Sure.
It's just an idea.
It happens other towns, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
You know, um, just an idea.
The, uh, I think that, um, you know, I, I think it would be a much more manageable task if, um, you know, we were, um, I, I mean, I, let me go back a step, what Mr. Lassard has provided us, and, and I truly do mean this, that what he's, if, if we were gonna work full-time in, on a sign ordinance, that's what the select board wants us to do, forget everything else, um, then, uh, you know, he's given a start, us a starting point, but at the end of the day, it's this board that has to sign off on it. It's this board that has to recommend it to the s- select board, it's this board that has to feel good about it going to the public. And if it, and I just see a lot of conflict with Mr. Lassard at trying to reach that point, and, and it would be an incredibly inefficient process. Cause I, I just haven't seen any indication from him, and this goes back to what you were mentioning earlier when we were discussing the minutes of the aha moment, but, whether it's not, he doesn't understand, or whether he just doesn't want to understand, um, you know, him being able to compromise.
So, you know, you know, a number of things are going to be, have to be decided. Number one, will this board, or will there be an entity that be, um, charged with coming up with this sign ordinance? And if the answer is yes, I would be asking, if it's this board, does that mean that that reprioritizes our work? If that answer is yes, that means that we're gonna be doing the sign ordinance first, and then, I really wanna make them, them, the select persons know that if that's truly what they, they think is the most important thing, and I wanna make it clear that I do not think it is the most important.
Maybe we can make it a kind of, does everybody here agree that it shouldn't be our number one priority? So you don't have to say, you don't think it is.
Okay, yeah.
The board does not think it should be.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's not a unilateral thing, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I'm certainly in agreement there, it's, I mean, we wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't have even come to the surface if it wasn't for Mr. Lassard.
I'm okay with handling it as our second priority, other than permitting and shoreline zoning, but we've, you know, and, and, you know, the, the, the state really wants us to update our shoreline zoning, they haven't done any mandates and stuff, but it's something they're really looking forward to.
To be honest with you, for me, it's not even our second priority, as far as I'm concerned, it's after the subdivision ordinance. I think the subdivision ordinance, and it's so out of date, that subdivisions have a far greater impact on, uh, not only the lakes, but the quality of life in town, um, than, you know, um, than signs. Particularly since, you know, I'm still trying to click rich, I, I, I can't, I don't see what the problem is.
Can we make a motion that we, uh, among us, uh, the motion is that the board feels that the, uh, for, uh, for number two priorities are, uh, shoreline zoning, update, and doing applications. And the, the, uh, sign ordinance would be thereafter.
So we have a motion then, so you're saying that we would represent this to the select persons?
Yes.
So you're saying it's, uh, our first priority would be shoreline zoning, uh, and permitting.
Right.
And our second priority would be the sign ordinance, and then our fourth priority is the subdivision ordinance?
No, I just said that the, the, uh, the sign ordinance would be thereafter, I'm not saying whether it's fifth, third, or whatever you say is thereafter.
Right.
So we could, could essentially say shoreline zoning is number one with permitting, um.
Is our top priority.
Top priority.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Cause then we'd get into the debate of what comes next.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion, right?
I'll second that.
Okay, so more discussion, so if we go, then go to the select persons and, and, you know, maybe we have our minutes by then and say, you know, this is, this is what we're, what we understand and believe are, are, our priorities are these things, as you stated.
The best interest of the town at this point.
Then they would know that we have the expectation that our workload would be for those things that we just talked about. And that sign ordinance would be some, sometime thereafter, to be determined, if you will.
Yeah, right, and, and, and depending on how that discussion goes, that we not forget about the subdivision ordinance.
Right.
Certainly let them know that that's, uh, on the list.
This is a, a map, maybe we should vote first, but as a matter of technique or, or presentation, Peter, uh, you know, you may wanna spell out, this is what our current work plan is, now that, you know, the sign ordinance, where does it fit in kinda thing, you know? Here's what we think our priority, next priorities are.
Let's go back a year and a half ago, when the comprehensive plan got voted in, we sat down and we said, we have to bring all the ordinances up to the comprehensive plan. Peter says, what are we gonna work on first? So, we've got one done, suddenly, because there's really no problem, we're gonna have to throw everything away and say, the heck with the comprehensive plan for maybe a year to get this other ordinance in?
Right.
I think we ought to stick to what we originally done.
And, and I think you're correct, I think if we work on the sign ordinance, it will delay the shoreline zoning ordinance by a year at, at least. I, I think the sign or, sign ordinance will run into a lot of opposition from the voters.
You know, the selectmen kinda put it on us that sounded like it, without even asking us first what we had in mind.
Right, right. That's why I think having a way to state.
No, that's a good suggestion on Pete's part.
Right.
So, um, after we vote, I'd like to do a quick review of, of our spreadsheet that did, does, kinda layout. At least, at least list the ordinance that associates where the recommendations are to be found in each ordinance, whether it'll be updated.
And subsequent to our discussion, prior discussion to that is when we came up with, you know, we didn't write it down, but, uh, then in our minutes of, you know, the order in which we would do things, and you, and there's consensus about that. But we need to vote, yeah.
So we've had some good discussions, we have a motion on the floor, a second, third discussion. All those in favor? So, um.
Roger, you in?
Do you?
No, I'm gonna stick with our plan.
Oh, so did you vote in favor of what?
Nope.
Okay, so.
No, it was, I'm not, I just wanna discuss maybe or something, Roger voted against it, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I kind of, I don't wanna make sure Roger's not confused, essentially voting for shoreline zoning first essentially goes with our plan, isn't it?
Against the plan of doing one ordinance, then going with the seven. I think we ought to put the sign to wherever it's gonna fall into, whatever the comprehensive plan wants us to change it to.
And, and just so you think, just so I can kinda clear my head, when Pete said thereafter, so it was, it was shoreline zone and applications, and sign thereafter, to me does not mean it's immediately following shoreline zone, it's just predetermined.
I think that ought to be stipulated that it's gonna fall in whenever, because somebody's gonna say, does the, the suggestion was made that you do the shoreline and then this falls in.
Yeah. Roger makes an excellent point, I could see the select board arriving at the same conclusion that, uh, after we're done with shoreline zoning, we're immediately gonna work on the sign ordinance.
Cause that's thereafter.
So. So, you know, one way to deal with that is, if we wanna keep our options open for what we deal with thereafter, you know, sign versus subdivisions, um, the, uh, one way would be to reword the, uh, motion to that our top priority for two thousand seventeen is the shoreline zoning ordinance and permitting.
I guess that's actually what I thought we voted on, uh, when we got in.
Yeah, well, what you do is just, you know, to vote on what my, my motion is, to vote on it, and then if you wanna, you know, just rethink it, you know, vote on it, and just turn it down if you want, and then just put another motion forward.
I'm gonna revise my motion now.
Okay.
I'll do, I'll do the same, cause I, I think we, what, I thought we, I know Peter said something about, and what he meant by thereafter was, then we kinda get together and figure out what we're gonna do.
Cause I really think, once you, we mentioned to the select person, well, we got planned a year and a half, two years ago, forced to work on all the ordinances and tweak them all, and now suddenly they want us to drop everything and start all new one. Before you know it, we're gonna have another new comprehensive plan in, and we still haven't brought all the ordinances up.
And we need to do that.
So they should prioritize the two, but they can't do that without knowing what we have in mind.
Okay, so I'll just stay where I am with my votes. We have two in favor, three against, and so the motion fails. So then we should come up with wording for a new motion to come up with something that we could present to the select persons about how we feel our work plan should go.
Me, I think we're all sort of, yeah, in agreement. It's just wording it so that we, you know, the motion says what we are agreeing to, and, and so just in the way of clarification, let me just ask everybody, uh, is it everybody's, uh, desire to, uh, keep this to sort of shorter term, you know, like I said, I made the suggestion, our priority for two thousand seventeen, or do we wanna have it, the motion reflect, um, our current work plan, which is, you know, our priorities are, our top priority is permitting, uh, followed by working on the shoreline zoning ordinance, and, and then thereafter, and followed by the subdivision ordinance, and period.
Right, we can do that, and then, then we're going to, then it'll get discussed at the meeting, alright? And then the selectmen are going to say, well, they're gonna make their, give their input, and they're going to obviously bring up the signage ones, so we're gonna get a real hard commit from them, and it'll give us a lot, which will give us a lot of direction. We force the issue.
And if, and if the selectmen really want the sign ordinance, they can work with Paul and Dennis, and when they think they're gonna, don't, uh, come to our meeting, all the selectmen, and Paul and Dennis, and we'll sit down and we'll talk over what they've got planned. She and John, we all have to agree to it.
We do have to be a little careful of the unintended, law of unintended consequences. This is a two-edged sword, uh, from my perspective, and maybe I, I'm the only one that feels this way, but let's say this, we, this is why, the, listening to the tape last time was so helpful to me, because I was, it was, uh, I wasn't sure what our role was. On one hand, I, you know, go and do whatever the hell you want, you know? Um, but on the other hand, it would, um, if they were working just for the co- for the select board, we don't know what they would, they probably would just go with whatever Dennis and, 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 uh, and Mr. Lassard proposed, whether it's good for the town or bad for the town. Um, whereas if we're involved, we can put, keep it in the context of the other ordinances, the comprehensive plan, and look at it in, with, you know, sort of a broader perspective, um, and, um, and I think would be a better final product. I mean, that's the role that planning boards have statutorily. But, um, uh, so, you know, I would be worried about the outcome frankly, if, if we were excluded from the process entirely. So I think it's, um, I think we need to be a little careful that we don't, I, I, I know I'm sounding like we want our cake, or I want my cake and eat it too, um, but, um, I think the right approach is, if they wanna, if the select board wants a sign ordinance, great, but what's the priority of that, working on that versus all the other tasks we have?
Right, that's, that's what it comes down to. Yeah, I agree.
But I, I, I also think George made this, uh, it was a formal motion or whatever, but shoreline zoning and permitting, followed by subdivision thing, I think we ought to at least vote on that so that when we go in there, we say, these are really, these are our priorities at this point.
They are meat and potato things that need to be done. That, just so you know, that, that excludes still mentioning work on minimum lot and, and stuff, it's small, but still, that excludes those.
Right, yeah, no, we haven't even talked about those.
Right, so, um, I am fine with, if, if I'm sensing that there are, that we can craft something that would state our priorities as you've indicated, George, that would hone in on, on those first three elements, applications, shoreline zoning, revision, zone, ordinance revisions, and subdivision ordinance revisions, period. That takes us through almost two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least.
You know, so I am absolutely.
And the comprehensive plan got voted on, what was it, two or three years ago?
Well, finally in two thousand, spring of two thousand fourteen.
Here we are in seventeen, another two years before we tweak what we have here, half of this comprehensive plan's gone. They just started another, because it's every ten years.
So, let me, uh.
If we don't get to them, they'll say, look at that, we passed that plan and nobody did anything.
Right, yeah. So, uh, let me just re, put that motion out there again, for everybody's benefit, including Nick's. Uh, so I make a motion that, um, our top priority is permitting, um, and revisions to shoreline zoning ordinance. Uh, our next priority is, uh, revisions, uh, to the subdivision ord- ordinance.
We'll stop there.
Second it.
After our votes.
Thank you. So motion, seconded. Well done. Any more discussion of that? All those in favor? Alright, perfect.
Well, Pete came up with the idea, you know, I mean, he was right on the money. It's just a matter kinda getting it the way we need it to be.
Making a process work, that, that counts, so.
I was starting to feel like the select was trying to throw us under the bus.
Well, I, I, I feel you, Roger. I, I haven't, uh, perceived that yet, but it could be a precarious position. You know, or we could be in a precarious position. Depends on who's talking to whom, and how much is being said, and what's being said.
And whether people are listening.
Especially if they don't know what we have planned.
Right, you know, and, and I gotta raise a flag on that one too. I mean, we told them this at least twice. Now, whether or not they remembered is a different story, or whether or not they've asked is another story. But I'm happy to tell them again, and I'll be happy to do so on next Tuesday. So, we'll do our thing, it's okay.
Well, we'll be there, we'll be back. I, I intend to be there, the back, yeah.
Excellent.
Hopefully we're not the last one on the agenda.
Alright, so does that cover this idea about discussing time management and increased transparency and, and more, actually?
Well, the transparency is sort of a separate. Subject, uh, and if I may, Nick is already, there are really three elements to this. Nick's already taken care of one, and that is the town calendar that's on the front page of the website. Our meetings are now listed there, so, you know, somebody doesn't have to go dig into the bowels of the, uh, uh, website to, you know, know what, that we're, when we meet. The other two things though was placing the, uh, the other two suggestions I had was, for us to consider was, uh, placing the agenda on the town website and/or emailing it out in advance of the meeting, you know, like about the same time we get it, to the same group of people that get the select board's agenda. I mean, that avoids having to create a new list or anything like that. We just use the same list of people that are interested in knowing what's going on in town. Um, the last time I saw that, it's not as, it's obviously a different list than what Mary Vogel had, and it's not quite as long, but, you know, it has some of the same people, you know, Howard Hollinger, um, uh, yeah, Jack, uh, the Olivers, uh, you know, people, I, uh, I don't know, I didn't see anybody from Ham and Lumber on it, but, uh, you know, those kinda folks that wanna know what's going on in town. That would be my, my two suggestions, uh, that way, cause right now people, yeah, they know we meet, but they don't know what's on our agenda and, and how, you know, it's sort of like when we were trying to figure out what was on the select board's agenda, we didn't know because, you know, we didn't receive it, um, and sometimes you can't find it on, on the website in advance.
Okay, so, does that sound doable?
Yeah, that would, does.
The agendas are now on the website.
Oh, it is, alright, okay.
There are announcements too.
Okay, alright, so, so really, it's just the email part that hasn't been.
I can get his email list, not combined list.
Okay, alright. That, and that's not too much work or anything? I know when Mary would, um, left, there was a problem because, it's not, I, I take it, her, the, her, the distribution list for the agenda for the select board was like a personal group list that was only on her, in her email. Has that been rectified?
I, Howard gave me all of her contacts, but they're just in one month's sum, and some of those emails don't work now, so I had to throw them.
But you had to recreate it basically, yeah. I, I just didn't know if, you know, there's a single group list basically, that the entire town office could use.
That's, that's basically how I took it from Mary, then last time she was here. She says, I have my own list for emails and I'm keeping it.
Okay. Anyway, that, regardless, uh, I was just curious, but, uh.
But that's a good point though about, about, uh, who has what list, and I guess I would then suggest that, uh, no matter what you do, if you can come up in a way that, you know, Anthony needed to get at your list, that he had a method to do that, I don't care how you solve it, I just would like to make it that it's not like only within one month, unless it's a house.
I mean, if, from the office management perspective, that would be the efficient way. I mean, that's not my job, but, but, you know, I mean, I was thinking of the list we used to have at D P on the H drive.
Right, exactly. So, and anything for?
I don't know what the town has for a net, internal network, but. But thank you for getting on those other two things.
I have one, one question about the town website. I was looking for the, uh, last year's town report.
That's on there.
And I found it, and, uh, I was using, uh, Google Chrome, I believe, and I, I thought I could then download the, the town report, but I think what I found was, rather than having the contents of the whole town report, it was a picture on the first page.
Also, it's not on there.
It's, it's close but no so there. So could you please, just check it out, uh, cause I, I can't remember, was it a P N G file? I think it was. So it's, it's, it was, uh, rather than the contents of the report.
It was just a picture.
A picture, yeah. So could you just check that out, see if that was there? If it was only a couple levels down, it wasn't, I found it rather logically, and I can navigate to it, and it was fine. In fact, I said, oh, cool. To be quite frank, I was doing this because I wanted to see what I wrote last year.
Uh, copy and paste, cut and paste, copy and paste.
But I couldn't do it.
Oh, that's right, it's that time of year, isn't it?
Yeah, so, but I did pass one, uh, estimate to Anthony on the twenty-sixth, so I got it in. Anyway, so that's how I stumbled upon the question.
What is it when you're sticking it in the, the, scan it and shows up on your computer?
What's that?
You have to scan it, right? Can you, can you scan a document and make it workable, that you can work on it somehow?
There are ways.
There are ways to do that, but you have to have.
You have to buy a special program, right? To convert it from, uh, from.
PDF.
PDF to doc. You have to buy a special program.
And some of them have this way to do, um, it's called optical character recognition, so it sees the stuff on this, it says, oh, that's text, and, uh, they give you the option to output it as a, as a working document and not just a PDF. So there are ways to do that.
Yeah.
But you have, that has to be done on the printer. You have to let the right kind of printer do that.
Have the device.
At the printer.
Not on my computer at home, but at the, you know, one we had at work, I could copy it, paste it into a Word document, and then I could edit it. But not a, you can't always do, not with every PDF.
Right, no, they're not PDF, right. So there are ways to make.
You got that smirk on your face with Peter about that, you know, that's a big secret, how, as to how to do that.
Well, well, no, I'm just like, I'm thinking about how complicated it can get.
Oh, okay. I've wanted to do that before, you know.
I mean, PDFs are, documents are made PDFs, so they make it hard.
So are there any other updates? I guess, uh, anybody, Nick, do you have any?
Sheriff wanted to know, if you guys, when the C D R goes to the voters, do you want them to see it with the edit? Or do you want it to see the file already? You know what I mean? So they can see what changed and see what didn't change? Like, do you wanna keep that red stuff in there?
I, I have an immediate response to that. You guys can hold a big thing. We switched and moved a lot of stuff around, and I'm thinking it's gonna be very confusing to have all of it, so.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and, and we had actually had a similar conversation about this, Nick, long before you got here, with, um, with, uh, Chris Huck from, from, um, from K V cog about that very fact. And with, at that point, it seemed like, my recollection is that we had kinda, I don't know about decided, but we were inclined to keep it that way until such time, uh, uh, until after we had gotten past the select board. Because we wanted to make sure the select board understood where the changes were. Um, but after that, you know, do, as Peter said, you know, just to provide the voters with a clean copy so that, uh, otherwise, a- anytime we moved something, they would, they might get confused and think it was an actual substantive change.
Alright, thanks. Anybody else with any updates or anything? Or, no? Alright, if we can wrap it up now, eight thirty.
We can chew up time no matter what, can't we?
Nick doesn't wanna quit yet.
Getting any fights lately?
Any fights with the chainsaw?
Well, what, what?
No, I'm still recovering from that one. Maybe, uh, I kept my staples out, next day it split open.
Oh, yeah.
Kinda like, uh, I'm not, it's, it's getting pretty well healed now, but I'm gonna get it through more time than what I think, because I don't want it happening again.
Yeah, so you didn't have to get more staples in?
No, they said they wouldn't, they don't do it, it started, like, it healed quite a bit and stuff. They said if we tried to staple or sew it again now, it's more likely to introduce infection. And it's kinda, just gotta heal on its own.
What did you do to yourself?
Uh, put the chainsaw on, I need.
Which knee?
My left one.
You, you wear those, those, uh, chaps?
I went out the next day and bought a pair.
No, I, I was, I was doing, I was doing, you know, just what you were doing, and I had, I had my chaps on. Boy, was I. I couldn't believe it. It'll go through you just like butter. I couldn't believe it. And I was so, I was so glad I had those chaps on.
And this, I was glad that, you know, the chain was still going, I, I, you know, it wasn't at the throttle.
Right, but still.
I just happened to get it too quick when I cut the branch, somehow I got it too close.
Yeah, that's what I did, you know, just a little bit too quick, but the chap stopped it. I said, oh my.
Well, I got them now.
The horse is gone, but he's got a.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, on a separate note, I saw, no, I'm gonna do this. I saw a, uh,